Good evening. Welcome to the annual Baltimore City Council Taxpayers Night. Taxpayers Night provides the public an opportunity to comment on City Council Bill 25-0060, the ordinance of estimates for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026, and Council Bill 25-0061, annual property tax fiscal year 2026. This is a meeting of the Baltimore City Council's Budget and Appropriations Committee. I am Councilwoman Danielle McCray, Chair of the Committee, and I am joined by Count Committee Members, excuse me, Councilmember Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, and I apologize, our City Council President, Z. Cohen. Now we'll get to the committee members. Councilmember Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, Vice President Sharon Middleton from the 6th District, Councilman Paris Gray from the 8th District, Councilman Antonio Glover from the 13th District. We are also joined by Councilmember Mark Parker, as well as from the 1st District, Councilmember Ron Dorsey from the 3rd District, Councilmember Zach Blanchard from the 11th District, Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the 14th District, and Councilman John Bullock from the 9th District. We're also joined by Representatives from the Mayor's Office, as well as Representatives from the City Council President's Office, the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, other city agencies, the Baltimore City Public School System, and staff to the committee, Peroma Nandi. For those of you attending here at City Hall, please also take a moment now to just silence your cellphones and your electronic devices. I would like to note that everyone testifying tonight is here because they care for and are invested in our city, and they feel strongly about some aspects of this budget. The testimony may at times be passionate. We expect that members of the City Council and members of the public will keep order and ensure that everyone has an opportunity to be heard. People who are disruptive will be asked to leave or ejected from the meeting. The purpose of Taxpayers Night is not for the council to make speeches or to debate with members of the public. We are here to listen to your comments, which along with other written and verbal testimony... I'll give me one second, I'm gonna flip this page. Along with other written and verbal testimony, we have received and will receive from the public along with information received from agencies during their individual hearings next week. They want to help guide our decisions as we pass this year's budget. Again, just want to let you know we're here to listen to you. We're not going to respond to the testimony given this evening, but the Chair may ask clarifying questions if needed on behalf of any council members. I do ask that any questions from council members for a member of the public be directed to the Chair, myself. In addition, I'll be making a statement that may be needed, I may have to make a statement that may be needed to guide the public in a proper direction if they are seeking information or guidance to city services. There are two points that I just want to clarify, that I also want to clarify at the top of the hearing in the hope that we can just head off any confusion. The mayor and city council are not proposing an increase in real property tax rates. The annual announcement of proposed tax rates required by state law contains some confusing language, but the rate is proposed to remain constant. The proposed real property tax rate is $2.248 per $100 of the assessment, the same as the previous fiscal year. Number two, the recommended budget bill is crafted by the mayor and his team, but the city council has not yet made any changes nor amendments to the budget bill. The recommended fiscal year 2026 operating budget has been recommended at $3.7 billion, and this is an increase of $220.8 million from the fiscal year 2025 adopted budget. The capital plan is recommended at $931.9 million. This is an increase of $199.5 million from the fiscal year 2025 adopted capital budget. Before we get to public testimony, I'd like to recognize City Council President Z. Cohen for any remarks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to all my colleagues that are here with us today. Thank you to everybody for showing up. I will just say it is a good moment to be the City Council President of Baltimore, and it is because Baltimore is winning. In spite of some of the chaos that we see coming from DC, our city is winning. And we are winning because in Baltimore, we care about working people. We care about our residents. No matter where you came from, you are welcome in our city. We care about housing and public safety and our environment. All of these things... Our young people, I see Kim Trueheart in the back. We care about all of these things that go into shaping our city's budget. And so, this is what it looks like when we double down on democracy, when we make sure the voices of our people are heard. And that is why I'm excited about tonight's Taxpayer Night. Again, you're not gonna hear responses from my colleagues and I on the council, but trust and believe we are listening to everything that you have to say. And I appreciate every single person for showing up tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I would like to thank everyone for being here to participate in Taxpayers Night 2026. Budgets are not just a collection of numbers. They also are a reflection of our values, and that's why your attendance tonight is so important to us. This is your opportunity to tell us your thoughts about the administration's proposed budget for the fiscal year 2026, and it helps shape the future of our city. Our city is strongest, as our council president said, when we come together and we hear each other's voices. And that's what we're here to do tonight. So again, I want to just thank you for joining us. We're gonna turn now to a brief presentation from Laura Lawson, the city's Budget Director, who runs the Bureau of Budget and Management Research within the Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Council President, Madam Chair, members of the committee, members of the public who have joined us tonight to talk about the fiscal '26 budget. I just want to begin by giving a quick overview of some of the numbers that are in the budget. And I'm sharing my screen.
Can you pull up the words?
Okay, there we go, great. So I'd like to just take a couple minutes and walk us through the numbers that are reflected in the BOE recommendations for the fiscal '26 budget. The total budget is $4.6 billion, and that's comprised of both the operating budget and the capital budget. The operating budget is what funds the day-to-day operations of city government. The recommended operating budget is $3.69 billion, or 6.35% higher than fiscal '25. The capital budget is what funds major infrastructure that helps the city provide services. This is things like roads, our water infrastructure, our parks. The capital budget is 20% of the overall fiscal '26 recommended budget, or $931.9 million. The capital budget is up by 27% year over year. As we began work on the fiscal '26 budget, the city was faced with a projected budget shortfall of $85 million. That was driven by the fact that expenditures were growing at nearly two times the rate of revenue. The mayor has put forth a recommended budget that seeks to balance that shortfall through three different actions. There is approximately $26.6 million worth of new revenue generation, and there is $43.7 million worth of savings through optimizing different city costs, and there is $14.7 million of savings to individual agency budgets. Within these numbers, it's important to note that for every $1 of new revenue that is proposed, there is $2 of proposed savings. When we look at where the money goes in terms of the overall operating budget, we can see that the budget, how it is allocated by the different pillars that are laid out in the mayor's action plan. For the all-funds operating budget, public safety is our largest pillar, followed by clean and healthy communities, then prioritizing our youth, economic development, and responsible stewardship. The city's operating budget is organized into different funds. Each of these funds have different restrictions in terms of how they can be utilized. The general fund represents 66.5% of the total fiscal '26 budget. This is the fund that our policymakers have the most discretion over. This is also the fund where revenue, like your property tax and your income tax, is deposited. Enterprise funds represent the next largest share of funding for the city. This is primarily our water and wastewater funds. And then finally, grants, which are largely awards from the state and federal government, make up just under 15% of the city's budget. When we dive specifically into the general fund, as I mentioned, this is the fund that our policymakers have the most discretion over. As we can see by this pie chart, property tax, income tax, and highway user revenue, those three sources combined make up almost three-quarters of the city's general fund budget. Within the '26 budget, there are a number of exciting investments made through general fund dollars. This includes $504.3 million in support for city schools. That includes meeting the state funding requirement for fiscal '26, as well as increasing the capital investment for improvements to city schools. There's $1.3 million to expand the group violence reduction strategy with ongoing goals to continue to reduce violent crime in our community. There's just over $1 million dedicated within the Housing Department to support the Vacants Initiative that is focused on eradicating vacant buildings in our city. There's $5.2 million invested in the Bureau of Solid Waste to make additional investments into staff, allowing the department to shorten trash and recycling routes. And finally, there's funding invested in the Be More Fast Initiative that's focused on overhauling the city's permit process. The fiscal '26 budget also allocates funds from the opioid restitution fund. The recommended budget includes allocating $36.7 million from this fund. This is the first year that these funds are being appropriated as part of the city's annual budget. When we look at how those dollars are being allocated, approximately 53% of those dollars are going to grants to community-based organizations. That includes allocations directly to organizations that were named as part of the settlements with individual companies, as well as $2 million for a grant-making process that will be overseen by the city's restitution advisory board. 41% of the budget is going to different city services, focused on combating the opioid epidemic in our communities. This includes standing up the Division of Overdose Prevention in the city's Health Department. And finally, 5.9% of the funding is being used for oversight and administration of these dollars. That includes $450,000 for the newly established restitution advisory board. State and federal funds are recommended at $361.1 million in the recommended budget. That represents, as I mentioned, about 15% of the total overall budget. We know that this is an area of the budget that is in flux as we face great uncertainty from the federal government. The dollars that are included in the mayor's recommendation are based off of information that is known as of today in terms of the status of the city's federal and state awards. I'd just like to wrap up by highlighting a number of the upcoming milestones associated with adoption of the fiscal '26 budget. The ordinance of estimates was introduced at the council on Monday. We are here tonight for Taxpayer Night. The city council will hold budget hearings with city agencies starting on May the 28th through June 4th. And the final day to adopt the budget will be on June 26. And that will give way to us transitioning to fiscal '26 on July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Lawson. We are now going to move into public testimony. At this time, I would like to go over the ground rules for this evening. As I stated earlier, we want everyone's voice to be heard, but anyone who is disruptive or abusive may be asked to leave or be ejected from the meeting. If you have signed up in advance of this evening's meeting to testify, we will need for you to also sign up right outside of the council chamber. The signup sheets are available there. When it is your turn, you will have two minutes to speak. I will let you know when your time has expired. You will not be able to read someone else's testimony for them. If someone has testimony, they can submit it written if they're not present. Written testimony if they're not present. For those attending in person, please ensure that you have signed up, again, to speak at the table outside the council chamber. And again, when it is your turn, I will recognize you, and you may come to the lectern here in the front of the room. Please speak clearly into the microphone so that our interpreters and those watching at home or on WebEx can hear your remarks. Again, you will have two minutes. There's gonna be a time on the screen, and I'm gonna let you know when your time has expired. Please note that we are not taking virtual online testimony during this hearing, nor will we be able to accept, again, testimony being read for someone not present in the chamber. The purpose of this evening is for us to listen, so we do not intend to enter a dialogue with anyone when you're speaking, but we may ask you to clarify a point at any time. If you intend to speak, we do suggest that you do the following. Please state your first and last name and any affiliations or organizations that you're with before you speak so that you can be identified for the record. Please also speak slowly and clearly. At this time, we're gonna start with Ms. Kim Trueheart.
It's getting harder and harder to walk, but I'm gonna be here. Good evening. My name is Kim Trueheart, born and raised two in this city. I love it. Don't necessarily like what you're doing, but the city has great potential. The first thing I want to do is remind you that y'all set up a Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. I think it's gone astray. And I really need y'all to get them in here and figure out what they're doing, because I don't have a clue. I mean, I've attended board meetings throughout this city. I've overseen good things and bad things. This has gone awry. I've asked them what their fund balance is. That's money they did not spend since they've been introduced. It's five years. The rumor is anywhere from $17 million to $40 million they have not spent. They have not answered my question and have turned it into a Freedom of Information Act request. They've already had 30 days to answer me. They've now asked for another 30 days. I'm gonna find the answer. And if it's $17 million, why did Wreck and Parks Department put out a schedule of summer programs this year? All, all, charging kids to go to summer camps, swimming, travel? It's ridiculous. And if you don't have the link to the website that lists all these, you need to be looking. And if that money, I asked Ms. Larson, how much was that, the fees, bringing in for our children? She doesn't know. Wreck and Parks decided to charge kids. At the same time, you're saying you're mindful of fees...
Ms. Trueheart, we're grateful for your testimony. Please close out at this time.
You're mindful of fees that people pay in the city, but you charging kids, and the Budget Director doesn't even know. Look, do your jobs. I'm not playing. Do your jobs. I will run you out of this town if I have to. And don't make me get upset about this, but our children should not be paying for summer camps.
Thank you, Ms. Trueheart, for your testimony.
Do something.
Hi, everyone. It's nice to be back. I'm a longtime Baltimore City resident. I love this city. I'm privileged to work in the city that I love. I'm privileged to be able to love the city where I work. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Baltimore New Americans Access Coalition. I'm a social worker. I'm a social worker here in the city. I'm a clinician. I'm a psychotherapist. I have a lot of titles and a lot of roles, but my goal as a social worker is to make certain that there is no need for social work. There's always going to be a need for my profession. There's always going to be a need for access. There's always going to be a need for services. I'm also an executive director. I represent an organization that was responsible for distributing funds to needy families and for facilitating culturally sensitive resource connection to individuals who now are privileged to call the city that we all love home. I don't hold fiscal responsibility for administering that grant any longer because there's plenty of work to be done, and that work has been granted to other organizations that are just as capable as the one that I'm very proud to represent. So I'm speaking purely out of passion and an urge for you to understand the importance of allocating funds and responsibly using funds in support of new families, new individuals, new commercial business owners, new schoolchildren, and new residents to our city. Everybody deserves to love the city as much as we all do. Everybody deserves to be able to have that city be accessible to them in manners that are culturally sensitive and accessible. Thank you very much. I forgot to say that I'm representing Southeast Community Development Corporation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Emma Isnaga, and I'm with the Amika Center for Immigrant Rights. Since the launch of the Safe City Baltimore program in 2017, our immigration legal services have been able to defend over 230 city residents, affecting at least 160 children whose parent was detained by ICE. The Safe City Baltimore program has been a lifeline to impacted community members. We've never experienced a crisis like the one we're confronted with right now. Since January, ICE has sought to arrest as many immigrants as possible with no thought to priorities, legality, or the impact on families. And each ICE office, including the one in Baltimore City, is required to arrest at least 75 immigrants per day. However, this crisis can be directly mitigated by investing in immigration legal services. I'd like to share the story of a long-term Baltimore City resident that Amika Center recently represented. Mr. A. has resided in Baltimore City for the past 15 years. He's a devoted father and dedicated his time to caring for his family, especially his oldest, who is diagnosed with autism and struggles with ADHD and speech development issues. In February, ICE raided the restaurant that he worked for. He was arrested despite having no criminal record. His wife was eight months pregnant at the time. She told Amika Center, "When I found out that ICE had taken him away, I felt like my heart was ripped in half. He always made sure that our family had everything we needed." She reported that since he was detained, his daughters stayed in bed all day, never smiled, and had no interest in eating. We stopped Mr. A.'s deportation, and he's since reunited with his family and met his child. He'll be able to provide critical support for them again. This outcome is only possible with the provision of legal defense services. Immigration legal services are more important now than ever. We'd like to submit into the record this letter signed by 20 organizations and 41 constituents to request increased funding for immigrant services.
Thank you for your testimony, Toby Dietz.
Thank you for the opportunity. Toby Dietz and I am testifying actually in support of the Pilot Task Force bill because of its relevance to revenue raising and our city budget. But I also have a connection to the issue. I came to Baltimore in 1982 to join the history faculty at the Johns Hopkins University, and so I've been incredibly grateful for the opportunity to work with so many wonderful students and colleagues. But I'm also a resident of Bolton Hill and Central West Baltimore, and like other speakers, I've come to love this city. And long, long before the era of Trump, I was convinced that JHU has a moral obligation to kind of face outward toward the city and to work in partnership with us. Now, it is really true that at the moment, our nonprofit universities and hospitals are facing tremendous, maybe unprecedented, uncertainty and financial stress. But as a couple of you have mentioned, so does our city. Our city has a debt deficit, and we don't know what federal policy is going to bring. So I really feel that now more than ever, we actually need that real partnership. No time to delay now. And that's why I support fair, transparent, and actually substantively meaningful agreement in 2026. You know, as you all know, the $6 million that the 14 leading meds and eds pay together, that $6 million together annually is kind of a token sum, recognizes the principle of payment in lieu of taxes, but isn't a serious revenue raising moment for us. And so we, as a city and in partnership with our institutions, we can do better. And a task force that, what works out, consistent principles for determining what a solid, meaningful agreement, revenue-raising agreement would look like, is a crucial first step. So city residents are watching. I know 11 of you have co-sponsored this bill, so we just need to get it moving out of committee and for all of you to vote on it. And I really thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andre Johnson. I'm a homeowner in District 4. My family lives in Baltimore for generations. My grandmother was a nurse. My aunt is a retired schoolteacher. And my other aunt walks and is retired from juvenile services. My wife and I are both healthcare workers. Our daughter wants to become a nurse one day. Maryland has the largest emergency department wait times in the country because of short staffing. This impacts the whole care team at the hospital where I work, as well as EMS workers, like firefighters. Hospital short staffing is not only hurting the quality of care, it's affecting the city budget and slowing down emergency response times. I'm extremely concerned about how the city's $85 million budget shortfall will impact public service. Working people are already bearing the brunt of the shortfalls through high property taxes and underfunded services. The city cannot find and feed its way out of this. Everyday people don't have that kind of money. It's time for the wealthy tax-exempt hospitals and universities to pay their fair share for the city services. They use $47 million in city services, but only pay $6 million in pilot agreements. The $41 million gap for almost half of the... becomes half of the city's budget. I urge the City Council to vote yes on Bill 250036 to create a task force to recommend a pilot plan for transparent processes where labor and community have a voice. People are losing faith in government right now for good reason. This is very disheartening to see the attacks on democracy on a federal level and increasing fines and fees for working people on a local level. The Pilot Task Force is an opportunity to do better for Baltimoreans, close the budget gap, and build a city that's with us and for us. Thank you for the opportunity for my voice being heard. I urge you to help restore the people's faith in government. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I also want to mention that we've been joined by Councilman James Torrance.
My name is Dorothy Bryant, and I'm proud to serve as President of Assembly, Local 44. Our members work every day to keep our schools safe, our streets clean, our children fed, and our parks made. and our parks maintained. But we face serious challenges that need your attention. Too many of our members do not earn a living wage. Many are forced to work multiple jobs just to get by, despite decades of service to our city and our kids. The city has a salary study for nearly a year now that likely highlight these inequities, yet we still haven't seen it. Please help us, urge the city to release it. We are also dealing with unsafe working conditions. Last year, we tragically lost two of our members, Mr. Ronald Silver II and Mr. Timothy Cotwell, due to hazardous on the job. Our members faces extreme heat, faulty equipment, and even violence at the workplace. We need the city to adopt a heat-stress standard and improve safety protection now. Lastly, we call for an end to contracting out public service. It doesn't save money and too often lead to lower-quality outcomes. Permanent union representative jobs are better for workers and for the community. We are negotiating in good faith for fair wages, better safety standards, and a path to permanent employment for all public workers. We ask your support in reaching an agreement that respects and uplifts our members. Thank you.
Thank you, President Bryant. Next, we have Wendy Smith, President Wendy Smith.
Good evening. My name is Wendy Smith. I'm a registered nurse with more than 25 years of experience. I also serve as the proud president of ASME Local 558. Our union represents nurses who have dedicated their lives to providing public health services here in Baltimore City. Our members have great pride in public health services. We offer the people of Baltimore City. We work directly with first-time mothers and their newborns. We provide care and services for our aging population, as well as providing health services for our young learners within Baltimore City public schools. We are here for our people when they need us the most. I want to start by thanking the mayor for the proposed increase in general funding from the city for the Health Department. We recognize that there are challenging, that these are challenging times due to a loss of state funding and continued uncertainty at the federal level. It is not lost on us that this budget includes increased funding from Baltimore City for public health services, and importantly, an increase in positions that are supported through the general funds. Again, we appreciate the proposed investment of $6 million from the Opiate Restitution Fund, which will establish the Division of Overdose Prevention within the Health Department and create 25 positions. This critical program will bring much-needed care to our people who have been impacted by the opiate crisis. However, our union remains deeply concerned about the proposed cuts to maternal and child health services. The fiscal year '25 budget allocates approximately $37.9 million, while the fiscal year '26 cuts the funding to $29.9 million. We still need clarity and communication on why this cut is happening and how our families, our programs, and our employees will be impacted by the proposed cuts. We're in negotiations, and we hope to reach an agreement soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Smith. Everett Johnson. Okay, we'll come back. Jacob Lefler.
Is the interpreter, I cannot see the, can the interpreter see me? Yes, I can see you. Okay. Hello. I'm ready. She was asking if the interpreter is ready. Yes. Hi, my name is Jacob Lefler. I serve as the president of the Baltimore City Association for the Deaf, and I'm here to speak. And also, I work in the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. And I see this proposal here in-house. I'm here to advocate for ASL interpreter and ask for a budget for consistent training on how to serve and serve the deaf community in all of the departments here. We would like equal access and also, also safety. Oftentimes, information in the mayor's briefings and various others are not closed captions, and the communication is not effective for the deaf community, whether it's online. That means the deaf community, we are missing a lot of information. We're not able to understand what's happening with this policy or different updates within our community. And I believe that the city can do better and improve better access, providing interpreters for the deaf, deaf hard-of-hearing, and deaf-blind communities. In-house interpreters will save a lot of money for the community instead of going through that can really affect prices. We need to have in-house staff who have an understanding and develop relationships with different city members and organizations and staff, and the people that work here in the city, understanding that training is important as well. Last November 2024, we did a training, two different separate, for fair housing rights. That led to a lot of conversation within the deaf and deaf-blind communities, and it had turnout. And there have been several requests since from the Department of Health and a few others for that follow-up training to continue. And I think that's great. I think we have contacted them, we were, but we found out that oftentimes, they're not able to afford, because the budget does not provide or allocate any money for training for the deaf and deaf-blind hard-of-hearing communities. So we're asking for funding, for training, for in-house interpreting services for all of us in our communities, and emergency in different agencies within Baltimore that really impact deaf-blind and deaf-hard-of-hearing communities. Alongside with training, we want that commitment for all residents living with a disability. And I encourage all of you on the community to support the Office of Equity and Civil Rights to improve the budget, which also includes providing interpreters. We are ready and able to collaborate with you, and we have everything set. We just need funding for this ongoing practice in in-house interpreters for the deaf, deaf-blind, and hard-of-hearing communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Julia Fernandez.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Julia. I am a Garifuna from Honduras and a proud member of CASA. I am a leader in my community, including helping a pregnant mom with three children homeless. She gave birth in my house. I delivered the baby. I try to share sources about know your rights and educate my community between my network. We need the city to step up and stop looking at us when it's convenient or when you want to look good. Real support means investing in the programs and services that help us thrive every day. I want to make one thing clear. People like me, we vote. Immigrant families are a cornerstone of Baltimore. We pay taxes, open businesses, and build neighborhoods. We bring energy, culture, and reliances. But federal courts are making it harder for us to get the support we need. Investing in immigrant services is not a charity. It's a smart policy. It keeps families safe, helps people thrive, and strengthen Baltimore economy. I ask you to stand with us. Restore the funding needed to keep these programs going. We are ready to work hard and continue building a better Baltimore. Please invest in us. We are future, and we are our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Han Zimer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council President, members of the council. My name is Matan Zemmer. I'm the Maryland Policy Director at Jews United for Justice, also known as JUFJ, which organizes more than 2,000 Jews and allies in Baltimore City in support of social, racial, and economic justice campaigns. In Jewish tradition, we are taught that no community is complete without several key features designed to meet residents' core spiritual and physical needs. As we often say, budgets are moral documents. Therefore, it's incumbent upon the city council to ensure this year's budget protects and promotes programs that address the needs for health, housing, food access, economic security, education, and the general well-being of city residents. This is where we look as city residents to see where words meet action. As the federal government attacks key safety net programs, essential funding sources, vulnerable communities, and promotes policies that benefit billionaires over working families, we must do everything we can to step up and protect those most at risk. We know that Baltimore City is facing an $85 million budget deficit this year, and will be facing more intense budget ramifications due to policies from the federal government. That's why it's important that we look at where we're leaving money on the table locally and where we can better ensure everyone pays their fair share. That's why I'm joining today with other members of the With Us Forest Coalition in calling for the passage of Council Bill 25-0036, the Baltimore City Payment in Lieu of Taxes Task Force, which is essential. I won't repeat some of the things we've heard already, but we believe in the integrity of these large institutions. And we, you know, they should be proud to contribute an honest amount to our shared resources. And while tonight is not specifically about that bill, establishing a more equitable and transparent pilot process will help generate much-needed revenue for the city from institutions that can afford to pay their fair share. Additionally, I just want to quickly uplift the budget demands from our longtime partners at CASA. The budget proposed by the mayor fails to sufficiently fund wraparound services, and we join them in calling for those funds to be restored. So I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Gladys Guzman.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Gladys.
Good evening. My name is Gladys.
Soy estudiante de penúltimo año en una escuela secundaria de Baltimore.
On my last year, at one of the Baltimore high schools.
Y soy parte del programa de mi espacio de casa.
And I'm part of the MySpace program, which is part of CASA.
Mi espacio me ayudó a tener éxito en la escuela.
This program helps me succeed at school.
Me prepara para la universidad.
And also prepares me for college.
Y me enseña cómo devolverle a mi comunidad.
And also teaches me how to return to the community, how to give back to the community.
Soy atleta.
I'm an athlete.
Juego fútbol y badminton.
I play soccer and badminton.
Y trabajo duro para mantener buenas calificaciones.
And I work really hard to keep my grades, good grades.
Mi espacio es un lugar seguro para mí y mis amigos.
The Space Program, MySpacio, MiSpacio is a safe program for me. It represents a safe space for me and my friends.
Nos sentimos apoyados.
We feel supported.
Aprendemos juntos.
And we learn together.
Y crecemos juntos.
We also grow together.
Los mentores de American Corps en el programa significan mucho para mí.
Los mentores del programa American Corps, in this program, they mean a lot to me.
Se parecen a mí.
They look like me.
Entienden lo que es aprender un nuevo idioma.
They understand what it is to learn a new language.
Y saben lo que se siente ser el primero en tu familia que intenta ir a la universidad.
And they know what it feels like to be the first in your family trying to go to college.
Ahora soy líder juvenil con CASA.
Now I am youth leader with CASA.
Estoy aprendiendo a usar mi voz.
I'm learning to use my voice.
Y quiero hacer la diferencia.
And I want to make a difference.
He llamada Baltimore mi hogar desde que llegué.
I have called Baltimore my home since I arrived here.
Y quiero ser parte del futuro de esta ciudad.
And I want to be part of the future of the city.
Pero por los recortes federales.
But due to the federal cuts.
Puedo perder este apoyo.
I might lose the support.
No sabemos si mi espacio continuará el próximo año.
We don't know if my Spacio, the program Spacio, will be here next year.
Por favor.
Please.
Inviertan en mí y mis compañeros.
I invest in me and my peers.
Ayúdenos a mantenernos en caminos en la universidad.
Please help, please help us stay on the path to college.
Y ayúdenos a seguir creciendo.
And help us keep growing.
Estamos haciendo nuestra parte.
We're doing our part.
Solo necesitamos que ustedes hagan la suya.
We just need yours to do yours.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Blaze Ngambi. Blaze Ngambi.
Bonsoir.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with me, with you today.
Je m'appelle Blaze.
My name is Blaze.
J'ai fait de Baltimore ma maison depuis que je m'habille ici, d'ici depuis le Cameroun.
I have called Baltimore home since immigrating here from Cameroon.
Je suis membre de la CASA depuis presque deux ans.
I have been a member of CASA for two years now.
Dans mon pays d'origine.
In my home country.
J'étais chef dans le secteur de la construction.
I was a certified construction worker.
Et d'ici Baltimore, j'utilisais le centre d'emploi de CASA pour m'aider à trouver des emplois dans ce domaine.
And here in Baltimore, I've been using the CASA Employment Center to help me find construction jobs.
Même si je possède un permis de travail.
Although I have a work permit.
Il est difficile pour moi de trouver un emploi à cause de la barrière linguistique.
It is, it is a, it's challenging to find a job due to language barriers.
Grâce à des organisations comme CASA.
Thanks to organizations like CASA.
J'ai pu accéder à des divers services et recevoir de l'aide en tant que francophone.
I've been able to access a variety of social services and receive assistance in my native language.
Je demande à la ville d'inclure dans le budget un financement pour soutenir les membres de la communauté immigrée comme moi.
I urge the city to include funding in the budget to support immigrant community members like me.
Des personnes qui sont ici pour contribuer au programme et aux services pour soutenir ceux d'entre nous qui payent des impôts.
People, people who are here to help build the city. We need, we need programs and services that support those of us who pay taxes and simply wants to continue growing and helping the city grow with us.
Okay. J'ai besoin de votre soutien.
I need your support.
J'ai besoin de votre soutien.
I need your support.
J'ai besoin de votre soutien.
I need your support.
Merci.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. This was not mentioned at the start, but anyone who is using an interpreter is provided four minutes instead of two minutes. is provided four minutes instead of two minutes. Just wanted to make a note. Darcy Carver Garber. Darcy Carver Garber with the Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. Okay.
Hi. Thanks so much for the time. Apologies, I was in the other room. I'm Darcy Carwin Garber. I'm the Policy Manager at Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. We are a nonprofit health organization, public health organization. We're a syringe service program, an overdose response program. Essentially, we ensure that there is safety, health, and dignity for those in Baltimore and in Maryland who are using drugs or in sex work. And today, just wanted to talk about the opioid restitution fund, that we know this budget does provide a good amount for that. And we're extremely thankful and lucky in Baltimore that the overdose crisis is being addressed. We also know that for any community organization, those that are most directly working with people impacted by this overdose crisis, if they weren't explicitly named in those settlements, now have $2 million to kind of fight over between us to make sure that the people we're working with most directly, hands-on, still have access to naloxone, to test strips for fentanyl and for xylazine, that they have sterile supplies to reduce infectious disease transmission, that there are ways that they can prevent overdose for themselves, for their loved ones. And really just making sure, the question is, how do we ensure that those organizations, so many organizations in Baltimore, still have sufficient funds to do the work that they need? Because we know that people who use drugs, they are the ones who are going to be using naloxone the most. They are the ones that are reducing overdose deaths the most. They are experts on naloxone. Are participants no more than anyone else that I know in how to save lives. And so how do we protect them in the ways that we can? It has been said before that budgets are moral documents, and it has shown that there is a deep love and commitment to youth, to the community, to health in this budget. And I know that the overdose crisis touches every single page of this budget. It's as it touches every single family in Baltimore. And so make sure that those orgs that are usually made by people with lived experience and living experience have the funds that they need to continue the work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to hear from Candy Kerr next, followed by David Schmidt. Candy Kerr, followed by David Schmidt.
Please speak clearly. My name's Candy Kerr. I am a member of the Bridges Coalition. The Bridges Coalition is a statewide coalition which is fighting for overdose prevention sites to be legalized in the state of Maryland, but also the city of Baltimore. Fortunately enough, Mayor Brandon Scott is on board with that, so I love that for us. Overdose prevention centers are centers in which people can access resources related to healthcare, housing, and more, and new tools to be monitored, new tools for use and to be monitored while using pre-obtained drugs to prevent potential overdoses. I also work for Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. I'm wearing the shirt. Darcy just spoke pretty eloquently about the stuff that we do. We were not one of the orgs that was named in the settlement. And so, as she named, we're going to be fighting over $2 million with other organizations in order to receive some of that money, like micro grants. I'm asking for reconsideration of the amount of money that was allotted for organizations which are closely working for and with people who are using drugs. We work with people day in and day out that are using drugs. And as was mentioned previously, these are the people that are reversing overdoses the most. We know that Maryland overdose numbers have dropped in 30% in the last, like, year, and that is due to a combination of the work that I do and the work that I've been doing in Baltimore City, whenever I started with Be More Power in 2016, 2015, and the work that I've been doing for the last, like, six or seven years at Baltimore Harm Reduction Coalition. And so I'm grateful everybody, like, I know that the overdose crisis has touched so many different organizations, and I'm grateful everybody's getting money. But I do want to remind everyone that the people that are working the most closely, we need the money in order to get the stuff in the hands of the people that use drugs and because we need the money to make sure that we're paid to be able to handle the secondhand trauma that we also see and deal with on a regular basis. Thank you so much. The sound is really cute. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you for your testimony. David Schmidt.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Members of the Baltimore City Council. My name is David Schmidt. I'm a Baltimore City Public School Teacher. I'm a homeowner right by Lake Montebello. I'm a returned Peace Corps volunteer, and I'm a member of Maryland's 5051 Affiliate Group, the Free State Coalition. I'm here because I care deeply about keeping young people safe, engaged, and thriving through summer programs. And I know these programs are very expensive. That's why I'm asking for you to pass a clean pilot without any weakening amendments. I'm grateful that the With Us First Community Wealth Building Coalition in Baltimore is advocating to make sure that our wealthiest institutions are paying their fair share for the services and benefits that they enjoy for being located in Baltimore City. The success of these anchor institutions has always been buoyed by the money and the labor of residents of Baltimore City, and it's time for them to pay their fair share. As a public school teacher, I have personally witnessed the need for summer programming for youth and young adults. Without fail, as the school year wraps up, parents and students approach me searching for summer programming. Things have definitely gotten better over the years. But that programming isn't always inclusive of multilingual learners, who are the students that I serve. It is hard to find programs that are both geographically accessible and inclusive of multilingual learners. And this is a big growth area for us here in Baltimore City. Through Baltimore's promise, I was very disappointed to learn that we're going to have approximately 12,000 less youth works positions available to Baltimore youth this summer. And needless to say, we know Youth Works has been a big success. And I think we need to adjust the budget to ensure that we have more summer programs and that these summer programs are inclusive of all languages. Please invest more in youth programming. And please don't forget about our immigrant community members when you design these programs. Thank you, Council, for your attention to this incredibly important matter. We must fund youth programs, and we need to make anchor institutions pay. And we need to include people that speak all languages. Thank you.
Thank you. Chrisalie De Los Santos.
Good afternoon, Members of the Council. My name is Chrisalie De Los Santos, and I'm the Regional Director at CASA for Baltimore and Central Maryland and a proud resident of the 1st District. I am here today, as you can see, with my CASA family, our members, and most important, our youth. At CASA, we provide direct services. We organize and we advocate. What's particular about us is that we lead with our members in the forefront. I'm here today in behalf of CASA and all of our CASA members just to share our disappointment when we looked at the proposed budget, that it does not allocate money to support immigrant families. Through our hotline, we have really difficult conversations every day with family members who have loved one detained, deported. And now they have to face not only the emotional pain, but they also have to face the economic hardship of legal cost and stability. This past year at CASA and our Baltimore office, we supported over 700 individuals to file their taxes. Many more still waiting. Over 600 people to become U.S. citizens. Baltimore immigrants know what their responsibilities are, and I hope that you guys know yours in representing everyone regardless of where they come from. Just in 2009, my dad went to Dominican Republic right before he brought me in here. And he told me about a dream that he had, which was to buy a building in Eastern Avenue because he knew that Eastern Avenue was going to become the heart of the city. Now that I live in that neighborhood and I get to walk it, I saw what he saw. And I think that if any of you walk down Eastern Avenue, you are able to see what immigrants means here in Baltimore City. They are not just people that come in here and sit back and lay back. They are people who invest in our city. There are people that bring value to our city. And I don't know about y'all, but like, I used to travel to New York to get Dominican food, and now we have like six different restaurants here in Baltimore. So I really hope that the budget that you guys approve really supports our immigrant community and who we are. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe this may say Juliana Valencia.
Good afternoon. My name is Juliana Valencia Banks. I'm a proud immigrant from Peru, a 17-year resident of Baltimore City, and call D7 home. I also have the privilege of serving on the mayor's Hispanic Commission. During the state, during the state of the city, Mayor Scott highlighted the population growth our city has seen. What he failed to mention was that this was due in a large part to immigrants that have chosen this city with all its faults and all its beauty as its home. At a time where our immigrant neighbors are being kidnapped and are being disappeared and their constitutionally protected rights are being violated, we need a budget that meets this moment. We need a budget that permits the mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs to strengthen immigration legal services, to support family preparedness, and to meet our community where they're at. We need a budget that supports our diverse and beautiful community. We need a budget that supports our immigrants serving nonprofits that are losing funding every day. We are more than taxpayers. We are more than laborers. We are human beings. We are your neighbors. And we need each of you to stand with us as we have stood with our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Dolamore.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Dolamore. I'm both a resident and a employee here in the city of Baltimore. I am a Program Director at Catholic Charities Esperanza Center and speak in that capacity tonight. Just to echo what we just heard from my two predecessors, we are in a moment of crisis. It is very easy to question, do we invest in the immigrant community? Is it safe for our municipality? Is it safe for our organizations? And I'm here, first and foremost, to ask this Council to continue to believe in the future of the immigrant community here in Baltimore City. It is worth ongoing investments. We will be brighter and stronger as a city if our immigrant community remains bright and strong. Specifically, since 2023, in partnership with some of the organizations here in the city, under ARPA funding, we have implemented at Esperanza Center the Baltimore New American Access Coalition. We serve 380 city residents as immigrant parents of U.S.-born children to navigate complicated and difficult-to-access public benefit programs. Things like SNAP, Energy Assistance, programs designed to end childhood poverty, increase food access, preserve infant and maternity health. A single mom, two months ago, from Venezuela, didn't know these programs existed. Because of this investment, that family with a one-year-old born here in Baltimore has access to stronger food through the SNAP program. Their mother does not have to choose between paying the electricity bill or buying nutritious food that month because of Energy Assistance. That baby, that one-year-old, is our future. That mom and the baby are our present. They are residents, they are neighbors, and they are valued. So I encourage the city council to continue to support and fund programs that directly support and uplift our immigrant neighbors, including programs like BNEC. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I also want to note that we were joined earlier by Councilman Mark Conway. Kristen Jones.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Jones. I am a proud PhD student at Morgan State University, and I serve as an intern at Clean Water Action. I am here to talk about sewage backups, which are not just messy, they're dangerous and expensive. Most people cannot afford the thousands of dollars it takes to clean and disinfect their homes in an emergency like this, and they shouldn't have to. Without this support, the financial burden is unfairly shifted to the residents who shouldn't have to shoulder the cost of damage caused by city infrastructure. In May 2023, the EPA and MDE ordered DPW to expand the Sewer On-Site Support Program to help all households affected by backups caused by city infrastructure. But for two years now, DPW has disputed that order. But good news, because the number of sewer backups are going down. The cost of meeting this obligation is also decreasing. I've looked into the consent decree, compliance reports, and in 2019, there were nearly 2,500 sewer backups caused by city infrastructure. Covering those costs, sorry, covering those incidences would have cost over $8 million. But by 2024, the number dropped to under 1,200. Now it will cost just $4 million to fully implement the program. The city is already required to budget $2 million a year for this in the sewer consent decree. If you add another $2 million in this budget cycle, it would be enough to fully fund the program and comply with the 2023 order. Please make that amendment. Follow up with your January resolution. Send a clear message to the affected communities, Mayor Scott and DPW. It is time to stop fighting and start helping. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Ellie Mitchell.
Good evening, Council President Cohen and Members of the City Council. Over the last several years, by the way, I'm Ellie Mitchell. I am with the Maryland Out of School Time Network, also known as MOST. Over the last several years, Baltimore has made meaningful progress in the investments in after-school programs, community schools, summer learning, the Children and Youth Fund, recreation. And these have created more opportunities for young people. However, progress is not the same as reaching scale or having a coordinated and effective system for the city. And this summer will be a wake-up call for us with the end of Esr funds and reduction in investments from philanthropy. We are facing the first summer in years with significantly fewer opportunities for young people, fewer programs, shorter hours, less support. So tonight, I'm asking you to reflect on the budget and think about the fact that 80% of a young person's life is spent outside of school. And I wanted you to question whether the city has set clear goals for youth opportunity across all ages. Is there a plan to achieve those goals and sustain them? Have youth and families help shape that plan? And what systems exist to ensure collaboration, quality, and accountability? Baltimore has great programs and dedicated leaders, but good intentions aren't enough. We need bold leadership, a unified vision, and creative financing strategies. If we're generally and genuinely committed to youth success, safer communities, and long-term impact, we must invest broadly, deeply, and boldly in the infrastructure for youth development. And I don't think yet that the FY26 budget answers these questions. So we ask you to think about how you might make more positive changes. And my written testimony has some great resources for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Cole Garvin.
Hello, good evening. My name is Carlos Sanchez. I am from the Lakeland community, and I work in Curtis Bay since Thriving Age of 13. And I'm here alongside my fellow peers to urge that the new revenue from the landfill tipping fee increase be reinvested into building zero-waste infrastructure and addressing the harms our communities have long endured. Excuse me, sorry. As youth who have been involved in this effort for years and residents in South Baltimore who live close to the Quarantine Road landfill and the Bresco incinerator, we've seen firsthand how waste and pollution have impacted our neighborhoods in South Baltimore, while real solutions have been delayed or denied. This continued lack of commitment to fund promised zero-waste infrastructure led to us and community members in South Baltimore to launch the Title VI complaint against the city of Baltimore and specifically requested this landfill tip fee increase as a way to fund needed zero-waste infrastructure and mitigate the harms of waste infrastructure and fence-line communities like ours. This new revenue is an opportunity to pivot, an opportunity to invest in zero-waste infrastructure that can reduce our dependence on incinerators and landfills altogether. We need that to be put where it matters, and that's in the budget, and not just saying it will be done or making it seem like there's going to be some change. It must support the people who've been impacted the most, low-income and communities of color. Let's not waste this and making, sorry, let's not waste this and making sure that those funds from this new revenue goes into making zero-waste infrastructure and healthier communities for us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jose Alverenga, and tonight I'll be speaking on behalf of Benjamin Franklin High School. I am a youth leader from the community of Lakeland. And I speak tonight for a community that has long endured the health and environmental harms of the Bresco incinerator and Quarantine Road landfill. As outlined in our Title VI complaint accepted by the EPA, Baltimore's solid waste plan continues to disproportionately harm black, brown, and low-income neighborhoods. Despite growing awareness, our diversion rate has dropped from 18% in 2017 to 16% in 2024, while burning at Bresco increased by nearly 40,000 tons. Worse, the Scott administration continues to deny critical funding for zero-waste solutions. The proposed tipping fee increase from $67.50 per ton to $135 per ton could bring in $8.4 million. That money must go directly to building a zero-waste future, not continuing harmful practices. We urge you to direct the new revenue towards what we also highlighted in the Title VI, that is mitigation and relief fund for impacted communities, zero-waste infrastructure like composting and materials recovery, and support for sanitation workers. South Baltimore is not a dumping ground. We are families who deserve clean air and real investment. Thank you.
Thank you for testifying tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Laurie Covert, and I'm the Director of Immigration Legal Services at World Relief Baltimore. Our nonprofit has served residents of the city for two decades with low-cost or free legal advice and direct case representation. So we're committed at our program to connect those from other nations to their goal of achieving permanent immigrant status. Of course, they seek a way to stay in the US, to work and build a life here as immigrants, without their fear of being separated from family, losing jobs, educational opportunities. And of course, many do not want to be returned to unsafe countries of birth. So our program zeroes in on identifying eligibility for pathways to citizenship. Taking these types of cases is, in essence, a defense against deportation or removal, family separation. It's a type of prevention against that additional hardship and tragedy. So in the short term, we help city residents keep work authorization and keep temporary protections that are available up to date. An example of this is Florence, who, two weeks ago, received an approval on a case that she waited eight years for an answer on. We saw her originally 10 years ago. This is a game changer for her. She's been granted four years of lawful status as a victim of crime who helped Baltimore City law enforcement on her case. And I say she only had to wait eight years for that answer. So this is a long game, and I urge you to allocate resources to immigration legal services.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Lorraine Aricat. I am a resident of District 9 in Mount Clare neighborhood, and I'm also the Senior Policy Analyst with 1199 SCIU. We're the largest healthcare workers' union in the country with over 5,000 healthcare workers here in Baltimore City. The city has a $85 million budget shortfall. And if our tax-exempt hospitals and universities paid their fair share in the pilot agreement and bridged the gap between what they currently pay and the $47 million that they utilize in city services, it would account for almost half of the city budget deficit. Calling for a fair pilot is not about whether institutions are doing enough for the city through their programs and services. A fair pilot, a fair transparent process is about coming together to solve a gap in funding for city services and to address the unfair burden Baltimoreians are facing by footing the bill for these institutions. It's true that we're all impacted by federal funding cuts, but the most vulnerable Baltimoreians are struggling the most by paying increasing rents, exorbitant water utility bills, affording food, and accessing needed services while our deteriorating city infrastructure. It's when times are hardest like these that we must turn towards each other, not away. We're only asking anchor institutions to pay their fair share, because if the city thrives, so do they. When institutions tell you that a higher pilot agreement would make them cut services and programs, we want you to know that's simply not true. In cities like Boston, New Haven, and Providence, institutions have stepped up and met the moment. And I also want to remind you all that the pilot agreement is a very small amount compared to the institution's overall revenue. And to illustrate that, I really want to have an example for you. So imagine we had 100 burger cookies that would represent an average Baltimore resident's income. And now, these three cookies are how much an average resident pays in property taxes every year. Now, let's see how much an institution would pay for contributing to the pilot. This is about how much they would pay. Hopkins pays about 0.03% of their operating income. And we know that when these institutions pay their fair share, that they will bridge this gap that Baltimore really needs.
Ms. Aricat can close out at this time.
And that's why we really urge you all to have a pilot that is with us and for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Maynor Flores. I'm also from Benjamin Franklin High School, and I came here to echo what Jose Alverenga and Carlos Sanchez has said. So Benjamin Franklin is a high school located in Curtis Bay. It's the heart of a very heavily industrialized and polluted area. I have spent well over a year myself learning about the consequences of the pollution, the facilities that are affecting the lives and health of many citizens, and acting upon the environmental injustices we face. If we ever plan to lift the burden that industry has placed on tens of thousands of residents, we must directly address Baltimore's broken waste system. Currently, most of the waste burned in the Bresco incinerator could be composed or recycled. That's why we helped launch Title VI complaint to make sure that the tipping fees are directly led towards building a zero-waste infrastructure. For too long, solutions have been postponed and rejected. Our communities continue to suffer while harmful systems remain in place. Redirecting these fees in a practical way to invest in composted and recycled reuse centers and education tools that can reduce our reliance on incinerators and landfills will bring lasting change to our fence-line communities like ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to all of our students who are showing up tonight and testifying. We appreciate you.
Good evening. My name is Alex Wulenskas. I'm a resident of Southeast Baltimore, and I'm here to testify on two items of importance to me: the proportion of our city budget spent on policing and the opportunity to recoup revenue for vital public services through a renegotiated pilot agreement. In the preliminary budget, about a sixth of the city's operating budget is spent on police. As a taxpayer, I would rather see more of this money, particularly the money spent on patrol, spent on programs and infrastructure that proactively invest in residents, economic security, and community well-being. As an example, a portion of the $224 million patrol budget could be reallocated to restore fiscal year '25 funding levels to the Community Action Partnership, workforce services for out-of-school youth, and park maintenance, which all have funding cuts in the fiscal year '26 budget. The fiscal year '26 budget reflects a challenging fiscal environment now and in the years ahead, which is why Baltimore City needs to execute a more fair pilot agreement with the city's 14 wealthiest tax-exempt universities and hospitals next year. I end my testimony by saying that I hope you will support a Baltimore City Fair Share Pilot Task Force and a pilot agreement that results in more revenue for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hola, buenas tardes. Soy Ricardo Ortiz, residente del Distrito VI y vicepresidente del Centro de Apoyo para la Superación del Inmigrante CAPSI, un colectivo de líderes en el área de Baltimore que impulsamos la superación de las comunidades inmigrantes a través de la educación.
Good evening. My name is Ricardo Ortiz. I'm a resident of District VI and vicepresident of the Immigrant Self-Improvement Support Center, CAPSI, a collective of community leaders in the Baltimore area dedicated to empowering immigrant communities through education.
Primero quiero agradecer al gobierno de la ciudad de Baltimore por los pasos que ya ha dado para apoyar a nuestras comunidades inmigrantes. Sabemos que se han hecho esfuerzos y lo reconocemos.
First, I want to thank the city government for the steps it has already taken to support our immigrant communities. We recognize those efforts, and we truly appreciate them.
También sabemos que Baltimore ha logrado algo muy importante en este último año. Ha empezado a crecer nuevamente. Y este crecimiento se debe en gran parte a la inmigración.
We also know that Baltimore achieved something important this past year. For the first time in a long time, the city is growing again, and much of that growth is thanks to immigration.
Las comunidades inmigrantes no solo traemos trabajo y diversidad. Hemos traído vida a vecindarios enteros. Pero ese crecimiento solo será sostenible si viene acompañado de inversión real.
Immigrant communities don't just bring labor and diversity. We have brought new life to entire neighborhoods, but that growth will only be sustainable if it is met with meaningful investment.
No es casualidad que hoy estoy aquí hablando en mi idioma. Y este simple hecho muestra la importancia de seguir invirtiendo en nuestras comunidades inmigrantes. Nuestra gente quiere participar, quiere ayudar, quiere ser parte de esta ciudad, pero muchas veces no pueden porque no entienden lo que está pasando a su alrededor.
It's not a coincidence that I'm standing here today speaking in my own language. That simple fact shows how important it is to continue investing in immigrant communities. Our people want to participate, to contribute, to belong in this city. But many times, they can't simply, they can't, simply because they don't understand what's happening around them.
Por eso les pido que el próximo presupuesto incluya recursos concretos para servicios legales, educación, salud, vivienda, y sobre todo, seguir fortaleciendo los servicios de interpretación.
That's why I'm asking that the upcoming city budget includes real, dedicated funding for legal services, education, healthcare, housing, and above all, the continuous strengthening of interpretation and language access services.
No pedimos más que nadie, solo pedimos lo justo.
We're not asking for more than anyone else. We're simply asking for what is fair.
Invertir en nuestras comunidades inmigrantes es fortalecer a toda la ciudad, y hoy más que nunca lo necesitamos. Gracias por escuchar y gracias por seguir construyendo en Baltimore. Y gracias por seguir construyendo un Baltimore donde todas las personas tengamos un lugar.
Thank you for listening, and thank you for your continued commitment to building a Baltimore where everyone has a place. Thank you.
Thank you. David Yaff. David Yaff.
Good evening. My name is Iman Habib, and I'm a climate policy analyst with Progressive Maryland, which is a multiracial, working-class political organization that works to build powerful leaders through grassroots organizing, also tries to ensure economic justice and to put an end to systemic oppression statewide. A substantial number of our members live in close proximity to the Bresco incinerator. And so tonight, I'm testifying in support of increasing investment towards zero-waste solutions in the budget for the fiscal year 2026. Last year, the Department of Public Works stated that by the first quarter of this year, the city of Baltimore would be able to send its yard waste to either Prince George's County's compost facility or another compost facility. However, this was contingent upon available funding. And at the Public Health and Environment City Council hearing on April 30, the Department of Public Works shared that they had submitted an enhancement request for the fiscal year 2026 to promote yard waste collection. And they also shared that the one-time cost for the yard waste diversion in the first year would be $1.7 million. We're grateful to hear that the budget proposal increases the fee per ton of waste that's disposed of at the Quarantine Road landfill. And we're aware that this projected revenue will be a little bit over $8 million. And we also appreciate that the city council, broadly speaking, is supportive of diverting Baltimore City waste from the Bresco incinerator. We would just really love to see the city council ensuring that this revenue is invested toward zero-waste solutions, such as fulfilling DPW's enhancement request to promote both composting and yard waste collection, and also to improve the environment and public health in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. David Yaff.
I'm David Yaffey. Did you call me a minute ago?
Yes, I did.
I was in the overflow.
It's okay. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here on behalf of the Friends of the Pratt Library. We've been supporting and advocating for the library for more than half a century. The first sentence of the Maryland State Library law says it's the legislature's finding that public libraries are an integral part of the educational program of the state. And the state constitution says that everyone is guaranteed a thorough and effective education. Unfortunately, right now, the Pratt Library is seriously understaffed. There are a lot of vacant positions. A number of branches are closed because they need new heating and air conditioning, and they're going to be opening up again, so they're going to need to be fully staffed. And that would only make the short staffing more acute than it is now. The library's staff has a great deal of talent. It's a wonderful pool of capabilities to render a wide range of public services. We've been hearing about summer programs for kids. Well, the library is a major summer program for kids, just as it's a major winter program for kids. The labor union is now in the throes of negotiating its first contract, and everyone there is doing the work of more than one person. They're overworked. They're overworked. They certainly deserve a raise. We need to retain capable librarians, and we need to be able to recruit some additional capable librarians to get rid of the understaffing and to staff the branches that are going to reopen. So I would say that an increase on the order of another $2 million or so beyond what the mayor's current budget is offering would really be necessary to solve the problem. Is my time up? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Deborah Alfandine.
Hi. I'm actually a Pratt librarian, and I'm a member of Pratt Workers United. And this is so big, I just thought it would be a good sign. And actually, when we get our contract, we were talking about having a raffle, and you would all participate, and whoever won, I would give this shirt to of you guys, because we really want to not bribe you, but really reward you. I'm not talking like a major plane or anything. I'm very aware that that's not cool. So I'm not talking about giving this to any one person. But I know that's not directly what you guys do. You're the budget. So what I want to say is, to back up David, we need the library to be funded so that we can get a contract that is protective of us. It's money, but it's also we need protection. And the library needs to be funded, so they will help protect us. They need to be motivated. So I don't mean any disrespect to the library administration, except a little, because it's been a long time that we've been negotiating. And so I'll stop there and just say, please fund the library, and then push the library, if you don't mind, to get with it and give us a contract already. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Fernanda Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Fernanda Rodriguez. I am an immigrant from Brazil. So be patient with me. Speak slowly. I work with the immigrant communities here in Baltimore and surroundings. And I want to thank the city of Baltimore leadership for your continued support of the immigrant communities. Because of your commitment, we know our rights, have access to critical resources like legal support, and most importantly, have faith that our city stands with us, even when federal policies work against us. But today, I must highlight how deeply those federal actions are harming our communities. Families are living in fear, fear of deportation, family separation, and detention. Many are afraid to leave their homes to go to school, the market, or even church. Some are even thinking of returning to dangerous conditions in their home countries because of how inhumane life feels here right now. This fear is not just hurting immigrants. It's hurting all of Baltimore. Immigrants are workers, students, business owners, and neighbors. We are part of the fabric of the city. I'm here today on behalf of many families to ask that you pass a city budget that reflects our urgent needs. We have invested everything into the city, hoping to build safe, dignified lives. Please recognize that investment and continue investing in us. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin Chetum.
I have copies for all of the members of the council, and I'd like to give those to whoever would take it. My name is Dr. Marvin Chetum. I'm the president of the largest density community in Baltimore City, which is the Matthew Henson Community Development Corporation, 36,563 individuals. There are two documents that I'm giving to you. The yellow one is the cover of a document that was printed September 30th, 2020 by the city of Baltimore. Enclosing it on page 32 is a document that substantiates the offices and members of Matthew Henson voting for a skateboard park along with 11 other items. The next document is the actual listing of that document. This is a document, 64 pages, that was printed by the city of Baltimore. Sadly enough, our state senator, Antonio Hayes, decided to tell a lie to the city of Baltimore that our community had not approved of it. Well, these are the offices of the committee. This is a document, 64 pages, that was printed by the city of Baltimore approving of our vision plan. We are still fighting, and will continue to fight, for the first black skateboard park in the state of Maryland. We're trying to bring it to Baltimore City at the Eastwood. We're only asking that you approve of something that was approved by our community. And sadly enough, we're going to ask that either the state senator, Antonio Hayes, publicly apologize, or we're going to begin asking for his resignation, because he's caused us a lot of embarrassment that we have fought for this for five years, two communities totally different, one totally black, Matthew Henson, one totally white. And we're drawing together to try to bring a skateboard park to the state of Maryland, to the city of Baltimore. And unfortunately, our senator lied about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Duncan-Evans.
Can I start? Greetings. My name is Christina Duncan-Evans, and I am the Teacher Chapter Chair of the Baltimore Teachers Union. I'm also a resident of District Seven. I'd like to begin by thanking everyone here for the increasing and record investments in education on behalf of Baltimore City. Increased funding to Baltimore City Public Schools supports critical programming and services, such as community schools programming, literacy tutoring, and the enrichment opportunities that allow our students to thrive, like fine arts, athletics, clubs, and libraries. As a library media specialist, that one is a special one for me. But the diverse needs represented tonight really indicate the need for more revenue. Because we don't want these needs to be competing against each other, we want them all to contribute to a thriving and interconnected city. When we hear about environmental justice, when we hear about the need for more education funding, all of these things contribute to a thriving city. And a number you've probably heard tonight is 47 million. It's the amount that our tax-exempt, largest tax-exempt institutions would be paying for their services. And I want to just take a second and explain why you're hearing that number so much. That's just what they would be paying for services. The amount that they would actually be paying in property taxes is much higher. That's 107 million. And so the fact that you're hearing us say over and over, 47 million, 47 million, kind of like, to me, is important because we're starting at a position of fairness. We think they should pay for what they use. That's really what we've been asking for, and that's what we've been repeating. We understand that their tax-exempt status means that they don't pay property taxes, and we're not asking them to pay property taxes. But as a homeowner in Baltimore City, I shouldn't be subsidizing a school or a university, sorry, a university or a hospital that has funds to do massive renovations, when I'd love to renovate my house that way. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you'll consider our pilot bill as an opportunity to increase fairness and transparency. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Sir James Weaver.
Hello. Thank you for your time. My name is Sir James, and I am Progressive Maryland's environmental justice organizer. I'm also a resident of District Forty in Pike Town here in Baltimore. And I'm here to shed light on the fact that, and I mentioned this at the previous taxpayer night, that Maryland's composting facility, according to the Institute for Local Self-Alliance states, that's a 2017 report states, that composting facilities generate about 4.1 full-time jobs for every 10,000 tons of compostable waste, compared to 2.1 jobs at landfills and just 1.2 jobs at incinerators. In addition, recently, early this month, on May 7th, Baltimore Sun reported that Comptroller Bill Henrys decided to abstain from the vote on this budget proposal. That definitely was an eye-opener regarding this budget proposal. And it highlights that there's concerns over the lack of significant investments in a zero-waste economy. And I believe that this is going to be an augury of something that could be detrimental to the progress of our city if we move forward to implement a budget proposal that doesn't include serious and concrete investments in a zero-waste economy, such as composting. We need to move forward on our plans to build the facility in East Baltimore and make it more expeditious to also be in conjunction with the climate crisis that we're facing. Thank you so much, and I hope you consider what I stated today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. James was the last person that we had to sign up. If there's anyone else within the chambers who would like to testify at this time, if you would come to the podium. Just going to give an additional 30 seconds in case someone else wants to testify. Okay, so I want to thank everyone for their testimony. At this time, I'm going to be turning the floor over to our council president, Z. Cohen, for any closing remarks.
Thank you to Baltimore for coming out tonight and sharing your priorities with us. I want to thank Chair McCray for her leadership on this committee. I want to thank all my colleagues for being here. And I just want to say, this is Baltimore's moment. It is extremely important, and I'm so glad that folks showed up tonight. It shows that we are an engaged city. It shows that we are not going to be beaten down by any external forces, that we're going to rally for each other. And so again, I just want to thank you for being part of your democracy and for showing up this evening and for always showing up for our city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
As Council President Cohen stated, we would all like to thank you for your participation this evening. Your comments have been heard, and members of the city council appreciate each and every one of you for taking the time to share your thoughts on this budget. The city council may consider the adoption of the fiscal year 2025 tax rate at the meeting of the city council on June 9th. In the meantime, the Budget Appropriations Committee budget hearings will commence on Wednesday. May the 28th, beginning at 9:00 a.m., hearings will go from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. on May the 28th, May the 29th. On May the 30th, we're ending at 5:30 p.m. But it will be back to 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. on June 2nd, 3rd, and we're going to conclude on June 4th. The full budget hearing schedule is available on the city council's website. That's at baltimore.legistar.com/calender-aspx. If you go to baltimorecitycouncil.com, you can click the link. We are now in recess. Thanks, everyone. Have a great evening.